Okay, thank you, thank you.
(Singing) Land of the rising sun we love and cherish, We love and hold land of our brave heroes. We must defend our lives or we shall perish. We shall protect our hearts from all our faults. But if the price is that for all we hold dear, Then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail to be a consecrated nation, Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our privilege. The weapons done, the glitz and boldness of free Shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible unscathed will pass. When we are void, the wounds of fatality heal. We shall remember those who died in mass. Then shall our children feel the glorious song Of victory we scored on mighty roads. Oh God, protect us from the hill we've fought. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us the strength to hear the human's call. To give a nod to calm the corny chain. Let those who rule do so with resoluteness. To make this kind a land of righteousness.
All hail be of fraud! Land of the rising sun we love and cherish. We have vanquished all the enemies. All hail be of fraud! God bless be of fraud! In him we trust. Shout it, sing it, all hail be of fraud! God bless be of fraud! We have emerged triumphant from all our foes. Through the crucible unscathed we passed victorious. Our trumpets pealing the glorious song. Play it, sing it, all hail be of fraud! All hail be of fraud! We shall always remember all that perished In the struggle for our freedom. All hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be borne both day and night. Save them always, all hail be of fraud! All hail be of fraud! Now our star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom shielding us from glory. Unleashed by your unlighted bent, Be of fraud, be of fraud, shining forever.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukokeka Piyama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation...
We observe a minute silence first to the fallen heroes of Biafra and the time starts now. May the souls of our departed heroes rest in peace while their spirits continue to embolden us as we fight on to see the full restoration of Biafra. I say, I say, I say, opening prayer by our supreme leader.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukokeka Piyama must be with us. Therefore, without any further hesitation, we must proceed to offer every prayer to Chuku Okike Abiama who resided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from of old, our Father who art in heaven, Nanyinkebineliwe, kahagedinsong, that your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it, that we may offer every glory unto thee, that we may offer you every adoration and adulation because there is none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy that you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee all over this very planet that you created. They are listening across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet where they inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening, this gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal, this very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onya pumieni ne that this very gospel must be preached, that mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins, we have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 3rd yet of August, as we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy, by the workers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee, to ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth, that you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created for one singular purpose and that purpose alone which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Bikome nanyebolachineke nanonigebe, you must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our only crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you to destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty because we remain every blessed day. Chukwa Abiama, biniwege, whiter than white and whiter than snow. Oh, woosani si menechineke, is there any way that we have seen that you cannot forgive us, our trespasses, to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago that instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth wishes to exist? You opened your mouth, Chukokeka Piyama, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Esua, who came here and said, “Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven.” Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come, that these children that we have given birth to all over the world and their children and their children and their children, as long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukokeka Piyama, hagefe rofefe, they will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be ralphed in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace under our command. Oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children, the Ephics and the Bibles, the Ison, the Shakiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are travelling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Igede, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukokeka Piyama, nigefe rofefe noso puliche, we will dance on these streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad, we are drunk in your glory and rightfully so because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra that your will may be fulfilled in our time. Nihilu chagege mesurachineke. All these we pray, all these we ask for, in no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadensossinebe, bigebe, wonepigebe. I say, I say, I say. My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. Ruwe ebedine owasotru, abana bossuzi omachineke.
Alright, you're all welcome to ICOM State De facto Town Hall Meeting welcoming the BRGI APM, his entire cabinet, the entire Biafran people, the BDF and every well-meaning lover of Biafra watching us out there. You're welcome. Just sit tight and enjoy the rich cultural heritage of ICOM State. ICOM State Admin, over to you. At this point, you take over from item number four. Item number four from your program, go ahead.
Good evening. Everybody here present this night. My name is Gottwill Offen, the ICOM State Admin. Presenting a welcome address to our acting prime minister. Now we want to start by first acknowledging the presence of the almighty Elohim, the creator of the heaven and earth, the father of Yahweh Esua, who alone made it possible for us to be here in a time like this. We will now pay to acknowledge our ancestors, the gods of our land. We move forward to acknowledge General Odumegu Ojuku, the man who saw tomorrow. He's popularly known as the Ikemba Neewi. We come to acknowledge him, General Philip Effiong. We call him the O2 Ekomi. He's a man who led the generosity of the entire Aqua Cross into that ugly, brutal, genocidal civil war. Though of blessed memory, we still have our leader, Mazin Namdekanu, the Ohamadike of Biafra land. To acknowledge as well, even though he stood there with us, our prime minister. I call him Major General Sitat Om. He is the obato be of this very territory. We acknowledge your presence, our formidable acting prime minister. Sir, right in ICOM, we are seeing your good work. With the entire team of Brigi that are here present together with you, we acknowledge your presence, sir and ma. We acknowledge your presence, all de facto administrators. We appreciate the very good effort made so far by the Biafra Defence Forces and all the senior commanding officers together with the triple general, Igue Butuzo. Our APM, sir. We are most gracious and in fact we are more gracious for this, your presence with us in ICOM. Honestly speaking, we never believed that you would honor our invitation. And this is because in ICOM we never count ourselves worthy of having you and your entire team right here with us. We admit here in ICOM the fact that we are backward trying to start even when it seems to be too late. Our honorable APM, sir. The backwardness of ICOM in quotes is due to inadequate publicity. The first ever radio transmitter as at the time publicity was made through the radio. That transmitter was mounted in what is today known as our sister state called Ogoja. The frequency of that transmitter was never received within the territory of today ICOM. And so that denial of communication kept the people of ICOM backwards, never knowing what was going on. The few of us now, we relocated to all the states from means of livelihood where we have access to knowledge about what was going on. where we have access to knowledge about what was going on. And there we were converted. Unlike our people at home, sadly today, you speak to our people at home, they look at you like somebody that is going to die tomorrow. In fact, it looks so strange to them over what we are doing. And this is the major reason for the backwardness of ICOM. But thank Chuku Okike Abiaoma Obaseweya Abasi, who today, through very, very few of us, very few of us at the moment, we are beginning to wake the spirit of ICOM. We say, "Thank you, sir, our honorable. If not for your coming, then I believe that even a lot of ministers and homeland administrators that are here present would not have even heard of the name of ICOM as a state in our territory, except for this your coming." Your Excellency, our APM, we are solidly behind you. It is a promise coming from the people of ICOM. Despite oppositions, despite saboteurs, like I speak now, I know the sizable number of people that were representing ICOM before, who left with the Fulani woman they call Ora Buwe. Emptying the whole state. But the few membership that were there, they all left, leaving just the few of us today that are making noise with the name ICOM, both on social media and everywhere. I use this opportunity, Your Excellency, sir, like I said before, we're using this opportunity to request honestly for any means of communication. It will empower us to do the job in ICOM. Our people just need to know what we are doing. Our people need to be carried along. I think this will be the very strongest weapon that we will use to get ICOM back to its full status. This is just our simple requests, Your Excellency. That is what we need, publicity. And I can assure you that we have taken that decision, the few of us that are here present, that from now onward, the name of ICOM will never die. That the name of ICOM will continue to ring in this our territory. We are looking out forwards that we will begin to compete with other states in our territory. It is a promise we have made. Your Excellency, sir. The ICOM we are talking about here today geographically, ICOM share boundary with our sister states, the state of Eboni and Ohauku States. By north, ICOM share boundary with our sister states, the state of Ogoga. And by south, ICOM share boundary with our sister states, the state of Kalaba. Your Excellency, by the central, there is this popular river. This river was the reason why the contraption called Nigeria named the former state Cross River State. So this river is coming from the Amazonian mountain and flowed down to centralize itself, so dividing the counties that make up ICOM into two. From the Amazonian mountains, this river pass across ICOM, flows down to Obubra, passes Itigidi, ultimately find its way down to the Atlantic Ocean in our sister state of Kalaba. And so making ICOM State to be surrounded up by this singular river. And now, that which makes it that from one county to the another county to the other county, there is the necessity of crossing this same river because it enshrines itself round and round about the former states. Your Excellency, this state is a very state that we cannot afford to lose. Your Excellency, the need for freedom comes. This is because there is something here people never knew. In 1967, there was this first ever bomb that sparked the civil war. Your Excellency, the bomb landed in Ogoga. Then, we were still in the construction, where together we were a state called the Cross River State. I'm here to remind all of us that are listening today that the first ever aggressive and destructive bomb from the British-Nigerian aggressive fighters landed in Ogoga to spark the contraption and the Biafra civil war. Going further, these genocidist aggressive fighters detonated two bombs in the present day Ugep. One of the bombs landed in Saint Patrick's Catholic Church, where people converged in a church and they were worshiping the Almighty God. The aggressive invaders detonated a dangerous bomb in a Catholic church where my own forefathers were brutally killed in their numbers. Another second bomb was detonated in the Ugep city roundabout when our forefathers converged for a cultural display. And our forefathers actually again, for the second time, died in their numbers. And this and more are the reasons why nobody there made the mistake to agree that we are not part of this freedom and liberation. We are part because as a people, we have suffered and partook a share of that genocidal civil war that took place in 1967 to 1970. Your Excellency, this and more are the more reasons we need this freedom more than any other pressing. So that the ICOM people are saying, "Welcome, sir." And with this opportunity, sir, like I do mention the issue of publicity, we look forward to you helping us to stand, helping us to come up, helping us to be like all those states. We have our own parts to play. We still look up to you as a father that give us the necessary assistance we need so that ICOM will come to its original status. And finally, our identity, even as a people, remains Biafra. Biafra remains our identity and nobody can take that identity from us. Your Excellency, sir. Together in ICOM, we are saying ndewunu. We are saying daluno to all the people who find time to be with us in a time like this. We say shalom from here. Thank you, sir, and thank you, everybody that is present for this gathering today. May God Almighty, Chukuki Abiaoma, bless and enrich you for your sacrifice of time, at least. Shalom from here. I remain Honorable Goswil Ofen, ICOM State Admin. Shalom from here.
There we go. Thank you. Interesting. Thank you, ICOM State Admin. Which item did you just finish down? You know the next item. Please go ahead to the next item now.
I presented a welcome address. Please, ladies and gentlemen, I want to go forth from here to present our cultural heritage in ICOM. Okay. In ICOM State, as it is today, we have diversity of languages. I don't believe there is any state in our territory today that have the number of languages we have in ICOM. And this is because in each of certain counties, we can count up to two or three languages in one county. Diversity of languages. For example, if you go to Obubra, yes, Obubra is a very popular city in ICOM State today. In Obubra alone, we have two major languages. One is called Mbembe language and the other one is called Adon language. In Itigidi alone, we have up to three good languages there in that county. Okay, where we have, okay, our sisters, who were formerly in Eboni State because of the nonsensical creation of the contraption that is called Nigeria. These are our sisters and brothers from Eboni State where, let me say by mistakenly careful of Eboni State to join the former Cross River State, who happy to find themselves today in ICOM State. There we have the Igbo language, purely Igbo language, purely, purely Igbo pronunciation within that location. And then we still have the Bahu mono language and we have the Imabana language. And so going further, we have diversity of languages in ICOM which also help us in the creation of our counties because we try to marry the culture and the languages of a particular people to determine that place as a county for proper and convenient governance of the location. We have diversity of cultures as well in ICOM. Where from Edjagam people, the Edjagam people of ICOM locality at this place I mentioned now is a stone true to Amazonian Territory where the river is coming from a particular mountain in that territory. So the Edjagam speaking people, in those days, we trek with our legs to cross to the Amazonian Territory. It just, if you can shoot catapult in those days, with your catapult, you can aim and kill a bird in the territory of Amazonia today. And that this closeness with the Amazonian Territory have also helped us to give relief to the fleeing Amazonian population. Today, ICOM is harboring over 10,000 fleeing Amazonians from the genocided war also going on in that territory between the Amazonian forces and the Cameroonian forces. And so we are today harboring over 10,000 Amazonian refugees. The fleeing Amazonians are having their support in ICOM State because of the closeness between us and them. So there is this diversity of languages, there is this diversity of culture. And as a people, we are agriculturists. The ICOM people are known for agriculture. We are good at the production of oil palm trees. We are good at the production of rubber trees. We are good at the production of cocoa. Many years ago, in this contraption called Nigeria, if you study the history of this business center, you discover that ICOM was a major producer of cocoa that fed this country. The Britain came down to ICOM to steal all our cocoa. They took it to their country and enriched their country. And today, ICOM is left unattended to despite our rich cocoa production. So we are good today at cocoa production. We are good at root tuber crops such as yams, such as cassava. We are good producers of gari today. And so ICOM is a state where nobody live, whether indigenous or stranger, and complain of hungry because their food is enough, more than enough. ICOM, we have mineral resources such as precious stones. We have limestones. We have our timber. It is one of the battles still going on as I speak now. The contraption called Nigeria has over the years mounted a Chinese company in the city of ICOM. And this Chinese company over the years have been deforesting our forests. They've been cutting down our trees, which they are siphoning into their country as raw materials. And they're giving this contraption peanuts in return of deforesting our land. And I can assure us that by virtue of what we are doing today, we are set to stop the Chinese company so that our barren lands, our thick forests will not go down in history. We are good at fish production. Like I have said earlier, we have enough river. One river encycle itself within the state are giving us a boost for fish production. And so the people of ICOM are purely agriculturists. We are into the production of farm materials and farm crops. And that has earned us a living. Even though this contraption called Nigeria neglected us, they abandon us, they are very good at taking our raw materials and our agricultural products to Abuja. Yet, they cannot give us a single road. So long as they load our agricultural product on their trucks and move them to Abuja, they leave, they abandon the road and abandon us. We don't have electricity, we don't have anything, no developments. Keeping us there to struggle on ourselves. And so the ICOM people are also very, very good at warfare. I want to make it categorically clear here today that when the Fulani Janga weed are invading communities all over this contraption called Nigeria, ICOM remains the only state today that the Fulanis cannot invade. It has never happened. It has, there is no record anywhere in this contraption that the Fulanis invade ICOM. And this is made possible because the people of ICOM are traditional warriors. They are traditional fighters. This, I, as you can see from our cultural display, our people are born warriors, our people are born fighters. Ecom State is a low-go area for Fulanis. At any point in time, they attempted, they used to go home and give the testimony to their people. It is not just, it is not a joking matter. Because these people, Ecom are born fighters. It is a natural gift to Ecom people. So we, we do not give any little, any chance to Fulanis to come to our land and terrorize our farmers and terrorize our mothers. You know, it is not done, it is forbidden. And then finally, uh, the Ecom people are very good at uh the production of palm wine, the production of palm wine. Uh, our parents can climb, they, no matter the height of a palm tree, our parents know how to climb there and produce the palm wine from the up. And such, we are also very good at drinking the palm wine. Yes, yes, it is our tradition. In Ecom, we produce the palm wine, we drink it excessively. Yeah, we use it to entertain our neighbors. I think this is all I have to say for now uh regarding the Ecom people culture, the Ecom people language and our natural resources. I say thank you from here for all of us that are here present and hearing me. Shalom from here, sir. We shall, yeah, Honorable Sir, I think uh the next item here is to present the traditional kola notes. Uh, should I go ahead, sir?
Yes, go ahead, sir. Go ahead, go ahead.
And uh, please, I'm very sorry to say that uh according to my culture, the presentation of this traditional kola notes cannot be done in this foreign language that I'm speaking. It must be done in my native language. So bear with me, even if you do not understand what I'm saying, I'm not cursing you. It is our tradition. Uh, our tradition say the kola must be presented in my language. So I'm going ahead to present this traditional kola notes in my language. Thank you. Obasodin. Obasewaya obasi. Ebino pabi. Edé bo vila kwa. Obawaya bo. Kika la beti. Ke suwa keli ko. Mina ke bessimi ke ya kema. Yo eti o tali le bulao. Obaya tuya u. Yobleka yukoi. Obasena le bulamo. Ka wo fai. Woku mi deli kaka. Watawa to be keep on the path. Epo po na e fu oyo i, no yoke. Epo po na e fu ke bua bule toke ko. Aba mama mbi oke, ya. Aba mama mbi oke, ya. Mbi oke, ya. Bana ni. You see. You see. You see. Alright. I just presented a traditional kola note in my language. Uh, none the ancestors have accepted our kola. I will then go forward to officially and universally break the kola notes myself. Our ancestors have given me the go-ahead to break the kola notes. Our ancestors say I should tell us that they are very happy with your presence. Our ancestors say they have accepted you wholeheartedly in this the land of Ecom. And so I will break the kola notes with a sum of ten thousand Ajim. Shalom from here. Uh, Ecom Prime Minister, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. The kola note is broken and we welcome everyone to Ecom. Please, the floor is open. Come and pick kola note. You have heard everything you needed to know about the rich cultural heritage of Ecom State and everything therein. The floor is open. Come and join in breaking and eating of the kola. Thank you. Uh, Ekpan Joku, your hand is up. Over to you.
Yes, special greeting to you, my honorable acting Prime Minister Masukin Kere. Special greeting to you, my honorable Minister of Information, Obon um Sonia Parawa. And the wonderful means of Ecom State Gosu Ufran. I don't know why I'm so happy tonight. Uh, we know they are a wonderful company. And back then in my days in high school in Kalaba, I used to have a classmate whose name was Daniel Ofran. And he was actually from Yakor, which is part of Ecom today. And I get to know a whole lot of things about the Ecom people, the Yakor people and the different languages and your culture. And you took your time to explain everything this, this evening. You took your time to try best explain the culture, the food, the languages. And I'm so impressed. I'm so impressed. I come here this evening as your boss in the eastern region. Uh, for those who don't know, Gosu Ufran also double as the deputy head of the eastern region. And he has been the wonderful um deputy to me. So I'm so proud and very happy for his presentation and what he has taken Ecom State to. And so far, so good. He has been the only one standing so strong for Ecom despite all the sabotage and the destruction brought by Madame Baobow. And today we can see how wonderful and how strong this young man is. And his presentation can tell you all that he never swerving, he's always standing on the path of truth. And even if he's the only one or two or three in Ecom, you can see he has successfully hosted the town hall meeting for Ecom. I can tell you all that I'm usually, I'm very proud of this young man. Gosu Ufran, thank you so much. I'm so proud of you. And may God bless all the citizens of Ecom who are standing on the path of truth. On this note, I would like to pick kola on behalf of a park border state and the, and the eastern regions of our dear nation with a sum of ten thousand Ajim. Thank you so much. Over to you, my honorable Minister of Information.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, my China guy. Thank you. Alright, the floor is open to everyone. Please support Ecom and pick kola, pick kola, pick kola. Uh, Biafra Admin, over to you. Unmit yourself.
Hi there, my honorable. I support you.
Yeah, that one is not for us. The floor is open to everyone. Uh, Kenneth Sukwa, over to you, Kenneth. Unmit yourself.
Good evening to everybody in their house. Good evening to our APM. We welcome you, sir. Good evening to the Minister of Information, Sonia Parawa. We are welcome in our midst. Uh, I want to welcome our APM especially with some of uh 500 Ajima. And also want to pick my kola note with some of uh 500 Ajima. Thank you.
Thank you. That is 500 Aj, right? Aj?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate. Um, we are the choir mistresses and the choir masters. We need to sing to appreciate those that are making donations, please. Alright, we come to Honorable Mesher. Over to you.
Yes, so there were everybody. Uh, greetings, everyone. All protocols observed. Uh, yes, I would like to pick kola uh with the sum of uh 75,000 Aj. They won.
They were, they were.
Are you there?
I am partially here.
My, your voice is better than mine.
Okay, no problem, sound check.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Honorable Happy Girl. Azia Happy Girl, over to you.
They won no, they come, they won, brick pan.
They were.
Nalon, thank you so much. I am here on behalf of uh, uh, Azia da um Mata Amuneki Chinyere. She is supporting what uh Ecom State is doing today with thirty Ajima. And uh, she said we should continue. Uh, today she got a very disturbing news from the homeland that her grandson of twenty-one years old was abducted by the kidnappers by the zoo, zoo terrorists in police uniform on his way to school at Uturu Okigwe Ases. She is not feeling good. So she said I should communicate this across.
Oh, God will release him.
And yeah, she wants us to put her in prayers and uh the son, the grandson in question. Um, she, she wasn't fine at all today.
Alright, that is a sad news. And um send our words to her that we are with her. And uh, I think we need the photo of that person that was kidnapped by the zoo terrorist army so that we can create awareness on the media for the media to see and know that um Nigerian terrorist army actually abducted this person. So also, let's, also location. And we need them to relieve the person. If they are taken into Obinsabara, wherever they have taken into, because that is where they do organ harvesting. This is the reason why Biafra Liberation Army are going after all these terrorist gang groups, bringing them down because they kidnap our children every day, disappear them, and then we don't see them anymore. So please, send the information across so that we create the media awareness. Thank you so much. And send our uh words of encouragement to her to be strong, that we are solidly behind her.
Okay, thank you. She said uh that they are even demanding cease meeting from the family. She will hear, she will get the message right away.
Alright. Zoo terrorist, can imagine zoo terrorist army in the Wawa land. Yeah, Honorable Betty, go ahead.
Oh, we are sorry for this sad news though. It's so hard to.
Very, very sad.
Don't know, don't. Don't, don't, don't.
Extend our greetings. We will all try to put them into prayer. God will do it for them and they will release him. There will be Confucian in their camp.
Amen. Amen.
Yes, yes. Thank you so much, my minister. I greet my wonderful APM. And my respect and love goes to IPM Mazie, Simon Ekpa, Obatobiye. We love him. And to my Supreme Leader Mazenamdekanu, all the gallant men, our BDF in general, especially Butuzo and the general and other commanders. We love you people, we respect you, and we are praying for your success and long life. I am very, very happy today. In fact, I was taking some notes from what this our brother was saying. Is it uh God's will affair? He is very wonderful. All the geographical location, the agricultural attributes of Ecom people. I started hearing Ecom as a, a child. My uncle walked there before the war and he came back shortly before the war. So, Ecom people, Biafra will definitely remember you people the way you wanted and give you everything that you well deserve. I thank you so much. We are happy that today, Ecom people, your voice is being heard. We, Biafrans, we must not relent. We have to keep moving on. Thank you, mister. God's will. Keep the fire burning. We move. So I am from uh Azanist uh State. I will be taking uh the Usoggi with uh ten thousand Ajim. Thank you so much and keep the fire burning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Betty. Let's sing for her, please. Minister Komfort, please reach out to your mic.
Hey you, thank you, Nam.
Thank you.
Yeah, Minister Komfort.
Thank you.
Welcome on board, ma. Hope you are doing well today.
Yeah, much, much better.
Honorable Komfort, God bless you, mommy.
Love all of you.
Good evening.
Love all of you.
Thank you, thank you. No, no.
They were.
They were, Nam Chini. I love you.
Hi, I love you, mama. Your face is so shining regardless.
No, 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 no. Have an open my face. I don't want anybody to see. Oh my god. Oh my god. I know, I see that. Oh my god, you're chilly. You're so, you're so bad. See you.
Beautiful woman.
No, 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 no.
You're beautiful. We love you, mama. Get better, huh?
Chini, chini.
The Lord is your strength.
Ah, yes, 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 yes. This Biafra, Biafra first, Biafra first, Biafra first.
Yes, uh, Biafra first. We move.
Sunny, you see, you see, Sunny? I'm behind you.
Thank you, ma. Welcome back, welcome back.
No.
Alright, we have um Eke Chukwu Sevi, over to you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
They were.
Uh, with that wasting time, I'm supporting the castage with a sum of five thousand Aj from Odmebu.
Alright. They were.
Thank you, thank you, Mazuke Chukwu. We come to Luziana. Luziana, unmute yourself.
Fuck is a fuck.
How do they come in? Ah?
They can always come in better. They can't do anything. We have Mirama, Mirama, over to you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I hope you may greet you. Our honorable, God bless you. You see, can all.
They were.
My honorable Sunny. May the Lord continue to strengthen you. All our. And all our honorables. The same prayer goes to you all. More especially our gallant men. It's not easy. Nigeria have been pumping all their arsenals. But what baffles me is how God is using. These men to. To to fight these people, to just think that. They don't know what else to do. Than to go buying our people off. Because. Destroyed, the hand of God is not to touch. I wonder why they should be buying people in order to. Using them to penetrate. Anyway, that is why they will, I know that our God is on our side. Our brother, God will, okay, I really appreciate you. In fact, with all you missed at. I start thinking of relocating to Ikoma. Because there is a lot of things to enjoy there, I don't know if anybody can argue with me.
Oh, yes.
It has been long, we are hearing about Ikom, and they are the best people that will produce fish. Fish. Ikom, when you go there, people say that there is a lot of fish, sheep outside. So, God really bless eastern region, Biafra. And that is why Nigeria want to die there. You can see how, for all the, all the way to Ikom. Nigeria still mortgage our forests. Why we have, why we have Calabasai port, they need to open it. We have one there, we have over Ukuta, they just shut everything down. In fact, we have really suffered in the hand of Nigeria. And I, and I know that at the end of the day, God with you. So I just want to support my, my Ikom people from my state, obviously. With uh ten thousand. And Jeff, God bless you all. Do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mirama, thank you. Maybe former, over to you, maybe former. Alonso Admin.
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
They were.
Yeah, my honorable APM. Good evening, sir, from uh homeland. Alonso State precisely. Um. My Minister of Information. Sunny Abraa, thank you so much. I appreciate. The great work that you are doing for Biafrans. All the ministers in the house. Uh Brighi Cabinet. Uh welcome all of you to Ikom State Town Hall Meeting. Thank you, oh my God, bless all of you. My honorable. Uh Mazi. Ophem, thank you so much. For your effort in Ikom State. We are seeing you, thank you so much, continue doing that. It's only Biafra that will pay you and God Almighty. Will make sure. That the Biafra freedom that we are fighting. Must come to. Reality. On behalf of my state. Alonso State. I'm picking a color with the sum of. Ten thousand AJ. Thank you, all of you. They were.
They were.
They were.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, my very former. Now we come to Jenny Oyama. Over to you, man. Unmute yourself, man.
Good evening.
Evening.
We welcome you to Ikom State. I welcome the APM, APM. And his entourage to Ikom State. Uh and uh. We, the Ikom people, when you visit us, we have to actually do a very big celebration. To welcome everybody. So with that. We are presenting a hundred tubers of YAM.
Wow.
And one native cow.
Wow.
For all, so with that, uh we are giving six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ.
Ona kuku kuka.
Konaka, konaka. Honorable Jenny, God bless you. Wow, thank you so much, that was. That a lot of man. Thank you.
Hundred and six, wait, let me, let me get the number again, so that make I not do mistake. Uh huh. Let me get the number, well, make I not do mistake, go. Before I will get suspension for pronouncing it wrongly. Uh huh.
It is six hundred and thirty-three AJ ma, six hundred and thirty-three, sir.
Six hundred and thirty-three AJ. AJ, hey. Six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ, please make kunak complete the word, six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ. Six hundred and thirty-three thousand AJ. And um. We have a bigger special number for. Our Jenny Oyama. Thank you so much, thank you, thank you, thank you to. Our mama Jenny Oyama. From Ikom State. Thank you, thank you for that presentation. Of the. And everything and the. AJ that accompanies everything, oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, mama, come, I mean Jenny, God bless you.
Thank you so much. Freedom for Biafra, over to you, your hand is up.
Yes, good evening, Biafrans.
Good evening.
Yeah. Uh from my end here, I will welcome APM and uh. And his entourage with uh twenty AJ ma.
All right. Thank you.
I will send a receipt to Sunny this week.
All right. Thank you so much, Freedom, God bless you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you don't?
I said, and you all also.
Okay, thank you, Nam, God bless you.
Yes, you are doing a good job and we are proud of you all.
Yeah, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you, Freedom. For Biafra, thank you. All right, we are still picking color. The color is still on the table, come and pick color. Come and pick color, there is color. That has been served, come and pick color. This one is not for us, this one needs to be sent to the trice bin. Over by Biafra one. Not for us. Floor is open for color picking. Come and take color, you came to. That. When you get back, you have to know you got something. From the Town Hall Meeting, come and pick color, please.
Okay, uh can I, can I go?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, uh greetings to our people Ikom. Thank you for hosting us today, uh we highly appreciate. This opportunity. That we have come to. To together to get as a family. And it's very interesting to listen to your cultural. Um heritage and your cultural geographic areas and everything that has to do. With the people of Ikom. Thank you so much to the admin, Mazi Godspower. So I really appreciate that detailed. Um information being given to us and I pray that by the grace of Chukwukika Biama. Biafra will come and every indigenous of Ikom. And beyond. Will live, inherit and enjoy the natural heritage. Of our forefathers, of our land, of our cultures and everything that we represent. So thank you for that presentation. I wanna support real quick the. Color not breaking. And because I'm a female, I'm going to go ahead and pick my own um Osogie. Yeah, with fifteen thousand AJ. Once again, thank you and thank God, thank you, great Biafrans for being here. God bless you all, we move. APM, welcome you, thank you so much, Honorable Sunny, you're doing great. Thank you, everyone. I might be here, I might be here. I might be here. Yes. All right. I'm gonna lower my hand.
Thank you, Honorable uh Tini, please let's sing for Honorable Tini, we appreciate your donation, let's sing for her, please.
Thank you so much, Honorable Betty.
Thank you.
They were.
Thank you, Honorable Betty. Thank you, Honorable Tini, thank you to everyone.
Thank you, they were.
Which one is Biafra Freedom Number One again? I thought Biafra Freedom Number One has spoken, Biafra Freedom Number One. Go ahead, unmute yourself. Uh Kaishan, Kaishan is not for us, all right, um. We need more hands up as we continue to pick color. Kaishan is not for us. Uh Biafra Freedom Number One is not for us, these are the enemies of Biafra coming to attack us. We are sending them out. So pick color, pick color, pick color, the floor is open. All right, the voice, the voice, go ahead, the voice.
Yeah. A perfect event from here to you all, presence, all the honorable in the house. I greet you especially the Minister of Information, for your good work, it don't miss something in the coming. Yes, I also join the people of Ikom. The administrator of Ikom is also the deputy head of Eastern Region. I welcome APM to Ikom State. With the sum of. I welcome A P M to ICOM State with the sum of one thousand A J. And, um, also want to confirm to what, um, the administrator said in his welcome address. And, um, I want to say ICOM is not just a name, it's a sister territory. It's a sister territory. So, for this reason, I also plead and, um, ask Biafrans to look inward and do the needful when time come because I believe the time is very close. Thank you very much. The Voice, Abagodo State, media head.
Akama Rama Kai Gakuru, the voice is by you. Akama Rama. Thank you, Honorable The Voice, God bless you, akanchawa. Okay.
Thank you The Voice, thank you The Voice for your donations, we really appreciate it, thank you, thank you. Alright, we need more hands, come and pick cola, come and pick cola, come and pick cola. Okay, uh, Honorable Yunis Uchachi, your hand is up, over to you.
Fuck Israel, fuck you, Yiliya bitch, motherfucker.
So, some of you even came in with, uh, Yunis' name, okay? We take you out.
Shall never be well with them, all these evil people. God will punish all of you all, evil people, may evil befall all of you and your generation. Say, say, say.
Alright. This one is, this icon one that came in with, uh, the icon one that came in with COS name, COS, are you there?
I don't think COS is there.
Well, let's confirm who is raising hand, uh, Mazzi Amobi, your hand is up. Unmute yourself.
Betty is rubbish singer.
We talk am say, nanan, miss Grant be that. Alright, the floor is open for everyone to pick cola and, um, support, um, ICOM Town Hall Meeting. Let's take some renditions before we continue while we wait for A P M to prepare for the next, uh, item on the program. Okay, we see Osogie, Osogie, unmute yourself, over to you.
Uh, good evening to everyone.
Nde wo.
Good evening to our item Prime Minister and to our internal leader and to our and to M A K. Thank you for everyone that have been donating. I think I have not been active for the past three weeks now due to uncertainty of things. In this, um, to sup- and will be supporting ICOM State with two thousand A J tonight. And I also want to make it clear to every Biafrans that I be sitting on, on the fence, that they are worse, they are betrayer. They are worser than the Fulanis. Because Mazzi Nkandu have been broadcasting and our people said, declared Biafra and he said, the time is not now. And we have given the mandate for Biafra to be a defense. If anyone is sitting on the fence, the person is a betrayer. And for those people that are be coming into this fundraising with fake identity, I pray that, I mean Nigeria happen to every of their household, they will never know peace. For them to come and be looking for us in this fundraising.
Be safe.
They will never know peace. Those, those people are Fulanis. Anybody that is fighting against the situation of Biafa, that, uh, the Fulanis naturally does not like anything good. That is why they will go to farm and destroy farmlands. Anybody attacking our people, um, worse than Fulanis. They are Fulanis blood working in them because it is only
This meeting is being recorded.
It is only the Fulanis that is against progress. It's only the Fulanis without will come into your community and destroy things that is working. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Mazuzochi, Akama Rama Kai Gakuru, Mazuzochi by you. Akama Rama. Akanchawa oh, Nde wo.
Unmute yourself Mazzi.
To be one of them.
Mazzi, unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, we can hear you.
Uh, I think the phone.
I remove him. Evil people, remove the idiot.
Biafra is all he asks for. Every night and day he shouting and pointing to one direction. But his own people are blind and saying it's causing division. Tell me why, why, why someone who sacrificed his life for you and I? Tell me why, why, why out of sight has become out of mind? He's asking for nothing and cares about not for his people emancipation. Ay, na, 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 na. Guys, there is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. Take your time and think what is going through. He doesn't want to give up but to protect you. Even when they throw him African juju, oh na, yeah, yeah. Freedom be canon now. Let me hear you sing, freedom be canon now. Freedom be canon. Freedom be canon now. Freedom be canon now. Why oh, why oh, why oh, why oh, why oh, why oh. You hate him because of envy. We love him, he's one and only. We follow him because he's ready to die for the freedom of his people. Whatever he said is a prophecy. Take it or you leave it later, you believe. He's so fanatical and never ready to die for the freedom of his people. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. Freedom be canon now. 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 Freedom, freedom be canon now. Freedom be canon. Freedom be canon now. Let me hear you sing, everybody know my child be singing. Freedom be canon, whoa, freedom be canon, yeah, freedom be canon, whoa.
Yes, at this point, uh, we welcome our Honorable A P M, the Toku Nado A P M of the Biafran people. The only A P M that will give you koboko, koboko, when you come to destroy the Biafran cause.
Honorable Sunny, please just a hand up, okay?
No, forget about that hand, that is one of those, uh, enemies that are coming to attack us, they are not for us. So, we salute everyone and, uh, join me in welcoming the Honorable A P M of the Biafran people, His Excellency Honorable Tuchukomkar. Nde wo, A P M, and welcome.
A P M, oh, thank you.
Nde wo. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Honorable Minister of Information. Thanks for all you're doing. Uh, Biafrans, I appreciate you, thank you very much.
Good evening, sir.
Nde wo, our Honorable Betty. The re, you know, you have the, the real one and the fake one.
Thank you, sir.
People that are coming, even with Biafran name is expected because, uh, the Fulanis, they will not, uh, be able to operate the way this, uh, saboters that are here to disrupt what we are doing. They will not be able to operate the way they are operating now. You can see they come with Biafran name. Some of them are from this, uh, book, fail, uh, coup plotters. They already know the name of our COS, they wanna come with the name of our COS. They already know the name of some of the honorable members that are not here. That's what they want to come with. But we just wanna let them know that no matter what they do, it don't matter what they throw upon us. Will prevail, will fight a good fight. Cause we are fighting for our freedom. I hope I'm coming out loud and clear, Honorable.
Yes, A P M, we can hear you, go ahead, sir.
We are fighting for our freedom. And all these evil people, as I'm speaking now, Biafran land, we don't have a police station of our own. Because we have not, uh, totally liberated our land and start to function as in a more government. We don't have where we will select, arrest them, prosecute them. Or, you know, uh, let the law, uh, take its full course. Since we don't have that now, we'll go with what we know that is effective in our land. What we know that we are blessed of. All these evil people, the word we utter out is our bond for now. It will never be well for them. No peace for the wicked. If you're one of the wicked one that have come here today to disrupt this program, it will never be well with you. I came across, uh, before actually I proceed, let me use the opportunity to remember those before us. Our leader Ojuku and our leader Philip Afion, we appreciate them. They paved the way for us. They opened our eyes to educate us the need for us to fight for our freedom. We also wanna appreciate our leader Mazzi Nmamika. Uh, this week, we send a strong message to the Nigerian terrorist zoo country. Not to let anything happen. Give me one second, let me correct something here, please, one second. We send a strong message, not to let anything happen to our leader Mazzi Nmamika. Nigerian terrorist country, they kidnap our leader from Cayman not because he commit crime. Just because he's fighting for Biafran people. Just because he's fighting for Biafran people. Just because he's asking for freedom. And our leader, our Prime Minister Mazin Simon, he was called for a so-called question. In few weeks' time, we expect his release because he do nothing wrong. We appreciate both leaders. And we appreciate the Brigade Cabinet, Rep, Admin, Coordinators. We appreciate all of you. We also appreciate the de facto government in the homeland. And I believe Akom State, today is the first town hall meeting, congratulations. We appreciate the administration there. Keep doing what you are doing. From the Admin, I heard Enya on his remark about the way, what we need to do to transmit message to Akom people. We'll try the best we can. That is why we always encourage every Biafra to come in mass, support your freedom financially. Go with finance, we can be able to do a lot. All this costs money, Eje ma, eje. Please, the Admin from Akom, please mobilize the citizens of Akom. Make sure, you know, they turn up when we have fundraising, even from your local state. Make sure, please, that they support our freedom because we need money now more than before. We have a lot to do with Eje ma. We have a lot to do. To make sure that the message go all across Biafran land, it require money. We can do it with our bare hand. So we try the best that we can. Why the de facto government, especially from East State or the Admin, please work very hard so that we can make this happen. So we appreciate you all for what you are doing. And let's move to what is happening in Biafran land. Biafran land is under siege by the terrorist country called Nigeria. And we are fighting, we are doing everything we can to push back, to pull them out of our land. It require everyone's support. Sabotage will not help. Those that are coming with Biafran name to disrupt our program today will not help. Rather, those that are sabotaging what we are doing, they will all perish by the weapon that we have as of today. If we can't lay our hand on them, we will curse them. We use the mouth that God have given us and with what it can do, lay a serious curse on all these evil people. Them and their entire family will perish, to never be well with them. Because that's only how we can defeat them for now. If we are ready, control our territory 100% and have our total sovereignty, we have everything that we, we can use to render that justice of democracy. But as he start now, we don't have that in place yet. So that's why we use the weapon of making sure that when they start going through the calamity that will befall them, they will use their tongue to count their teeth, to find out where do this go wrong, what happened. I came across a video, let me just play this voice here. I'm not trying to validate this person, but people have to be careful. Honorable Minister of Information, what I'm going to do is that I will forward it to you. So I think if you play it from your end, it will be clearer, please. Please, Biafrans, stop. We are warning Biafrans, those that are lying against us because they have used this to poison the mind of Biafrans. This, all these audios, these lies, you know, a lot of Biafrans are listening to it and they are buying the idea thinking it's true. So these people, it will never be well with them. So we always want to let them know that whatever they are doing, there is consequences. Honorable Minister of Information, I just forward you this audio, please. Can you, can you play this audio, please? Okay, why, why you get it ready? These evil sabos that have come to destroy Biafran people, they have used lies, propaganda, carata assassination to destroy and poisoning a lot of Biafrans. And we still repeat it, it will not be well with these people that are practicing evil against this great cause. We have been attacked in different ways, but by the grace of our Creator, who know that our hands are clean. He's helping us out in our fight, but we will also fund our freedom and do the best we can. Please, Honorable Minister of Information, are you, are you able to play this audio from your end, please?
Yeah, I'm downloading it, I'm downloading it, let it finish downloading.
Okay, thank you very much. And I also want to use this opportunity to let Biafrans know that whole posa de ma, these evil man have signed to allow a group called Agune Chamber, terrorist group that is working within Nigerian terrorist states who have signed and approved the deployment of Agune Chamber to come to Biafran land, Biafran villages, socials, ECK and we have ECK here. We have ECK and also Ebony Sezon with affective from Monday being tomorrow. So whole posa de ma, the illegitimate governor that is working within Nigerian terrorist state. They are doing everything they can to bring our BDF down. They are doing everything they can to see if we can stop fighting for our freedom. My fellow citizens, I just want to let you know. Don't give up. Keep fighting. Keep funding your freedom and ask for hope. Very soon, akagapatagi, very soon, very soon, very soon. There is no place for the wicked. All of them that have come and colluded to destroy Biafran people, to take our freedom from us, it will never be well. I played with every citizen of Biafra. Please come on board. Fund your freedom. Your freedom will not be given to you. Your freedom is in your hand. If you think it won't raise you, you are just joking. Every day, every day, we campaign about our freedom. We emphasize, we stress the need for us to be free, the need for us to fund our freedom. Some think we are joking. Biafra is here and I keep saying it. We are very close. If you're still wondering, asking, when will this Biafra come? Biafra is here. We all see what is happening in our land today. Years ago, it's not like that. Everything the Nigerian terrorist state is doing, they are wrapping up, trying to see, is there any kind of magic? What will they do to kill us all today? What will they do to chase us out of our land? What will they do to Islamize us? And some of you Biafrans are there doing your buying and selling, living in your comfort zone. While we have thousands of Biafrans that have been killed, murdered, some have been beheaded, and you have this illegitimate governors burning the house of Biafrans, destroying their properties. I believe it's high time we say enough is enough. And this time, we fight and fight like never before. Now that hope have signed and approve this terrorist armed group. Because hope still have everything it take. He still work with the Nigerian terrorist state. And he is illegitimate governor parade himself in Biafran land. He still have what it takes to fight Biafran people. Are we going to allow hope? And some of you in Allah, Aron di Zog, all these villages, you are seeing what is happening. Some have family in Dasbra in abroad. Some have family that they are worried to do. Why can't you put a call across to your family members? Ask them to support. Tell what is happening in Biafran land. Our people are smart. Our people are intelligent. And our people are also very, very stubborn. Is it until they kill us all? Some of us are doing our best. Today, before this town hall meeting, I have three meetings already. After this town hall meeting, I have two meetings before the end of the day. All about Biafra, talking about Biafra, way forward. Why some are levitating, eating is here, we are no hobby. Why their house is on fire? What a shame for those that I don't want to support. World Evo Congress, the chairman called me about two months ago. Running mouth about what he want to do. He want to go to Finland. He want to do this, he want to do that. I asked him questions. How is he supporting? How is he contributing? That money he want to use to catapult himself to Finland. Why can't he put the money in our logistics? So we can chase the enemy out. Our leader Mazin Namdekan have had meeting with this group. They did not deliver. They did not bring it down. Even our Prime Minister, they did not deliver, nothing. They don't have Biafra at heart. Is it the American so-called veteran? They don't have Biafra at heart as well. But every time our leader Mazin Namdekan have a cut this. They will run down there to parade themselves like if they love Biafra. Like if they love the people of Biafra. They don't. If they do, why are they not condemning the killing in the Yamufu? If World Evo Congress love the people of Biafra, why are they not condemning what is happening in Biafran land? Why are they not condemning the Nigerian terrorist states? Everything they are doing is just for their own political gain. They want to run to Abuja to snap picture with our leader Mazin Namdekan to use it for campaign, to use it to be relevant among Biafran people. The Evo or Biafran American veteran, they will catapult themselves all the way from United States of America to Biafran land. But they cannot condemn the atrocity that the Nigerian terrorist state have committed against Biafran people. They want to act, pretend like they care for the Biafran people. Why they don't? Is it your honeys and the Evo? They will run to Abuja to see a beloved feeling like some bamboo that just getting their banana. Deceive the people of Biafra. They will make themselves relevant just for their own political gain. This chairman of the World Evo Congress for over two months, now I hope he's listening to me because he's a big fool. After he asked me to send him some information till now, he never responded, idiot. He make a walk. This how they deceive our leader Mazin Namdekan. This how they deceive our Prime Minister. They will do this, they will do that. They never done, do nothing. Evil people, fake people, spooks everywhere. All these evil sabotages. Their generation will suffer it unless they repent. Every enemy of Biafra, since we can't lay our hand on you now, the cause we utter, we follow you. No place for the wicked. Our land is burning. Biafran land is bleeding. Evil people that have colluded with Nigerian terrorist state, they will bring our tanks to kill our people, Biafra. While you have some Biafrans, they don't even care. They think it's okay. It is not okay. Honorable Minister of Information, are you able to load this voice I sent to you yet?
I will go can nation. Because the one son of the na, the love of the guy can't get what we told you. Why you not have it? And you can go make food there, the good moon night. Yeah, yeah, okay, get it. With one name, okay. Yes, I can get back, get the governor, I look.
If not coming louder, I don't know if it is from.
Wait, let me. Oh, that is the highest of the volume. That's the highest of the volume. That's the highest of the volume.
Can, from this room, can you hear, is this voice coming clear?
Honorable Junior, can you hear the voice?
No, no, it's all fainting.
Okay, wait, let me refresh, let me refresh.
Please block the chat.
I've blocked already, let me refresh.
Alright, thank you.
While Honorable Sonny is doing what he's doing, all these evil people that in the chat section, some of them.
Tonight right now, 8pm, let me see. Is it better now?
Actually, still the same.
8pm, if you have the one that is just audio, this one is the one that has been turned to video. And the volume is like this.
Alright, but if you go to the, if you go to Biafra Washman, I think you can play it from there.
Okay, let me see.
Yeah, I think, starting from after like a few minutes of the video.
Uh, Biafra Washman TV.
Alright, while you're searching. All of you evil ones in the comment section, keep commenting evil, keep shouting about evil about us. Whatever you are doing, you think you can bring us down. But I promise you, the Biafran people promise you, it will never be well with you and your generation. Because some of you are the ones that put us in this mess. This is not a political correctness government. Our land is bleeding. The Nigerian terrorists have come. They are killing our people every day. And all you evil sabos are here to distract us. That is how you will distract your entire, entire generation.
You say.
That is how your life will be cut short.
You say.
Evil people, we have no rest.
How come?
Yes, 8pm, let me try here from the YouTube.
The government has some CD.
Yeah, it's better.
Has some CD, a little confusion everywhere. Because he had no way to walk, one day, one day, can't get to say it in the Ebo now. You know, the handwork of for Nigerian government and the hope was of them. So, he had no way to walk, um, but I'm about to go Monday, Monday night, I can't, I had no way to turn us. Can I live, who, who do we have still, when I am in? My brother, he have a, I can deny me, he have a, I can deny me. But it's quite unfortunate they use the Ebo against the Ebo. I'm with the Ghanaian.
These pain that all of you are putting us through will never be well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Please, uh, you know, uh, it's just a lot going on. We are in the night hour and with what is happening, when I wake up every day, it kind of give me joy knowing that Biafra is here. If what is happening is not happening, that means we are not doing it right. Christopher Musa just disappear and appear this week again. He appeared this week because he see that the Nigerian terrorists is not winning the war. Christopher Musa found out that America have finally stepped up to sanction Nigeria. Christopher Musa of the Nigerian terrorist C D, Chief of Staff, uh, uh, C D S, find out that Canadian have designated the Nigerian state as a terrorist country. When you talk about A P C or P D P, whatever their political wing is, if you call them terrorists, you call the country terrorists. Because A P C, they are the ruling party. So if then we call A P C a terrorist organization, who is the head of that terrorist? Tunubu, who is the president of Nigeria? So Nigeria is a terrorist country, my fellow Biafrans. The vice president of Nigeria is who? Shetima. Shetima is a co-founder of Bukuharam. Please, because of time and I know in homeland now in Biafra land is, uh, midnight already, actually it's past midnight, I will be wrapping up. Please, my fellow citizens, anyone that is protesting evil or trying to destroy this great movement, disease from it, it don't give us, we don't, I don't feel, I don't have joy when I lay a curse, a weapon that I have for now on the evil doers, because I know it will happen. So we encourage all of you to repent. Yeah, Honorable Maz.
Yeah, please check your, uh, WhatsApp message. Thank you, sir, as you continue.
Please, we encourage all of you to repent from your evil way, so that salvation will be your portion, please. We don't want to see all of you perish. If whether are you evil people, we perish, you all will perish. I swear to God. If this fighting for Biafra is the last fight I'll fight in this planet earth, so be it. If I can lay my hand on whatever that I can use to burn, burn Nigeria down today, I would do it. Cut this video, send it anywhere, if I can. Because I hate Nigeria with passion. Nigeria have killed too many of my people. They have killed us in millions. If we don't burn Nigeria down, if we don't stop Nigeria, they will kill us all. My people, they will kill us. What is wrong with us? It's high time we burn Nigeria down. Say shit, oh, please. What have Nigeria done for you? Did Nigeria gave you steady electricity? Good road, good hospital, good education? No! It's all pain, sorrow, agony, poverty. They will make you irrelevant in this global community. Why, Biafrans, you have a lot of scientists from there, hardworking doctors, lawyers, people of all walks of life. But the Nigerian terrorist try to bring you down to nothing. If you keep, if you still keep up with Nigeria, the world will not even remember you. Rather, we will all perish. Please, uh, fellow citizens, it's high time we grab our freedom. Whatever that will prevent us to our promised land, any obstacle, both internal and external, external enemy. Destroy whatever come your way. Grab your freedom. Freedom is not given, it's taken. If it is a Biafra, it's a stumbling block. Take that Biafra out of the way. If it is from your household, your family, kick that whoever it is out of the way. If not, that person will kick you out. Choose one. Do you rather live in your own home or you rather choose to live in I D P camp? Choose one. Do you rather live as a freeborn or a slave? Choose one. Is it, will it be better for you to worship your true god, Tukokabiama, Jehovah, Elohim, or to worship a terrorist god? Blood-sucking terrorist god? That all, that god wants is blood, innocent people's blood. Is that the god you choose? The ball is in our court. We better choose whose god we worship, whose god we want to be with. As far I and my household and the entire Biafra, I believe. We want to be with the god that is not a blood-sucking demons. We want to be with the real god, Tukokabiama, Jehovah god. We don't want that blog god that is so testy, that want the blood of the innocent people. We don't want to worship that god that encourages people to go and rape women, rape cattle, rape everything, cow, whatever rape come their way. We don't want to worship such god. I have a lot to say, but I'm just trying to wrap it up. But it break my heart when I see some that call themselves Biafrans not doing what is right. Like that gentleman that we played the audio. You need forgive me. Is no lucky, your household would perish. With your evil, no place for the evil ones. It's not my word, it's the word of God, Tukokabiama. No place for the wicked. And for all you that have plotted coup about us before, coup one and coup two, that are still disrupting. You are evil, we catch up upon you. How wish, uh, we already fully liberated Biafra land. Who starts speaking political correctness, but right now. Uh, how many prime minister on earth that don't have their own private jet? I don't have mine. How many that don't have adequate security? I don't have mine. So we haven't fully get what we want as, uh, we are not operating as a normal government or a normal country now. So we say it with the way it is, we be more cautious to get our freedom, because that's only how we can get out of this. If we keep being political correct, correctness, we are correct, we want to speak, act like Trump, uh, Ben, Benjamin Netanyahu and other world leaders that you know that they already have everything in place, the way should be. Please, uh, we have some good news, we are making progress no matter what. First of all, we want to congratulate our brother, our honorable Chima. Starting from today, Honorable Chima is now the Minister of Foreign Affairs. And we will be, uh, we'll be communicating with Biafrans. Very soon we will post the appointment later, so everyone can have a copy and go through it. Honorable Chima, I don't know if you're here, but if you're not, uh, believe, uh, you will come across this, I think, uh, you're already aware of it, so, uh, we are making it official that your appointment. Thank you, Honorable Chima, from now is now the Minister of Foreign Affairs. And we know who the Minister of Foreign Affairs is before, is Bryson Ekoma or whatever. It's a sabutoi, he's sold out, so he need to get out of way. And we already actually espell him, so we just want to make it official now that Honorable Chima is now the Minister of Foreign Affairs. Thank you, Anakukwakiba. Thank you very much. And we have, uh, okay, our Honorable Keowu. It's a German rep.
Yes.
Okay, Owo, Honorable Keowu is German rep. And we have, uh, Madame Nkiru.
Yes, sir.
Honorable Wachupu, U K reps.
Yes, congratulations.
We have, uh, we know one of our most educated one that is in Europe, uh, Honorable Muyboko. We know him as academic highness.
Yes, sir.
The one that speak the, the grammar that a lot of people finding hard to interpret. Hopefully, it's not going to make it too difficult for all of us. So here's the E U rep. So we know the former E U rep is a spell as well, uh, Obi. She's not fruitful, so we need those that are genuine and fruitful.
In Nigeria.
Honorable Muyboko, his academic highness is now the European rep.
Yes, congratulations.
And he, he's also the one, uh, hand, you know, uh, the Italian rep as well. So I know this is going to be a lot of work for him. And we are here to support you, the people of Italy are, are there to support you as well. Please, we encourage you to do your best and for just few weeks that you have made Italian rep, there's a positive change from before. Thank you, Honorable Muyboko. And we also have a Honorable Nenaya Okiroke, Deputy Italian rep. Thank you all for your new appointment. And, uh, we walk, we wish to walk with all of you honesty and truth. Please, uh, because of time, we are running out of time already. Thank everyone. Please, all the sabutoi, disease from your evil. Because the long run, to, to not be well. Even from the short run, you think we are joking. Uh, we are not joking, just in a little time, things will be unfolding, a lot will happen. And I keep saying September. Please put our, both our two leader, Mazin Namdikanu in your prayer. Our Prime Minister Mazzi Simon Ewa, please remember him in your prayer. Next month, we expect positive result from Finland. A lot will happen next month. And in Washington DC, it's going down there. Please pardon my voice, because I have been in a meeting from meeting to meeting today and I still have two to go. So it's what I'm doing for my country, uh, Biafra, I love you all. This fight sometime is getting more interesting when you see all these sabutoi attacking. That mean that what we are doing is very effective. But it breaks my heart that a lot of Biafrans don't realize the mess, what is going on in Biafra land today, that they need to come and support our freedom. If you go on Twitter, S, YouTube, you see images coming from Biafra land, how the Nigerian terrorists have deployed armor tanks all over Biafra village from Hiamufu to Okiwé, although are on this dog. All those tanks are not there to celebrate anything or to protect you or to give you security. These tanks that the Nigerian terrorists have deployed is to kill our people, your people, to kill innocent Biafra. Please, we need to fund our freedom. We need to chase these people out of our land. They can take their tank to Abuja. They can take their tank to Sukuto, Somalia. We don't need all those tank in Biafra land. And for all the gutter fake news, it won't be well with them. B B C Bull last time was reporting just to say all kind of manner evil against our B D F. But when they deploy all these tanks to kill Biafra, this useless B B C don't even report it. B B C of court of injustice, it won't be well with them. Is this C N N? C N N is everywhere. But I don't see, I don't know any reason why they are not reporting what is happening in Biafra land. All the tank that have been, that the Nigerian state have deployed to Biafra land, C N N don't report it. B B C don't report it. Their faith, gutter media, call Horizon channel, they don't report it. What does that tell you? You on your own. That means if we don't protect our land, we all gone. We need to protect our land. Fund your freedom, don't be discouraged. Thank you all from here and the admiral of Ekon. We appreciate and I appreciate this invitation to be with you at the town hall meeting. Uh, mayor, the entire Briggy cabinet. And please for all the newly appointed ministers, please, uh, we expect the best, because now we are separating the wheat from the shab. So those that have been setting us back, they are not leaving us, so we are being more formidable now. And we moving in the right direction. Please, if you know anybody from Biafra land, put a call across, educate them, the reason why they need to fund their freedom, what they need to do, and they need to take all measures precaution and not to even try to validate any election in Biafra land, because there will be no election in Biafra land. There will be no election in Biafra land. And please, let me just actually read that this letter. This is addressed to the President General Mbo, uh, Mbozi, the President General Azee, the President General Osumohu, the President General Lulu, the President General Ubo Louis Suzo, the President General E C K. And on this letter I said, deployment of additional Agune Chamber, A R O, A R O S. In view of the numerous voice note and credible intelligence report regarding recent attack on innocent ci, uh, uh, citizens within your domain, particularly in E C, E C A K and Lulu. I am, uh, this, uh, this is the useless, illegitimate governor of the Nigerian terrorists that have colluded with the Nigerian state. That is pleased to inform that, uh, that the governor has now approved the deployment of additional Agune Chamber. Agune Chamber to do what? These are the same people that have been killing the innocent civilians in Biafra land. So my fellow Biafrans, if we don't rise up, fight, defend our land, we are in a big mess. Please, if you in your homeland, support your freedom like never before. Then if you can fight in your own way, if you can do aga wutu, wutu in your own way, it's encouraged. Just be careful and take precaution in whatever you do. But if you can't, we have the B D F. Support your B D F, let them do the work. Then all these evil people, please, anyone, anyone that know how, if you know how to bar hacker, if you know how to draw hacker law, no, in your own way kindly do it, kindly, because these are the evil that have colluded. I wish I can do this by myself and I have everything it takes, it will take me one night. All of them will be gone by, I wipe all of them out. It's a promise, it's a fact, but we need support to be able to take care of these fools that have colluded with the Nigerian terrorist state to come and kill us. They need to go by the playbook of these jihadist terrorist monsters. What they have done in several places. Look at what happened in Iran, what ha, what they did to people of Iran. The indigen of Iran today, they are fighting for their own survival. They are trying to get their government back and live a normal life. Look at what they have done in Syria. Even to today, Syria is still in chaos. Look at what they have done in Lebanon. Lebanon is still in chaos. Is it, am I talking about Gaza? People don't know that the main root and problem of the Gazian people today are the Hamas, the terrorist wing, that wherever they planted their seed, wherever they are, they cause problem. Am I talking about Yemen? We can allow that in Biafra land, please, fight for your freedom, please, we don't want their footprint. Thank you from here.
Thank you, our A P M.
Thank you, A P M. Honorable Sonic, can we sing for A P M?
Yes, go ahead.
A P M, Ogenkere. A P M, Honorable Ogenkere. Ewo, Mponkenami, Uferefiwarafeo. Thank you, oh, ewo. Mponkenami, Uferefiwarafeo. Thank you, oh, God bless you, Honorable Ogenkere. May the Lord strengthen you with his grace and more wisdom. In the name of Tukokabiama, he say.
He say, uh, he say, we thank you, our A P M, for that, uh, thunderous speech. Uh, we come to Honorable Mighty dot, mighty dot S C admin, over to you, sir.
Yes, I go with me, come on.
Me come, do, welcome on bird.
Thank you. Um, greetings, Your Excellency, um, the acting Prime Minister. Greetings, uh, the C O S. Um, greetings, all Biafrans here, the admins and the reps. Greetings, uh, the U S Assistant Rep, I mean, North and South America, Sister Chi. Greetings, everybody here.
Wow, there were.
Yes. May come for the people of Oran, I mean, the people of Ekon. So there is, um, Ekon, hmm. I, Ekon is a very special place. That was the reason why I actually show my face, I decided to join this thing. Ekon is a very special place. When I heard that Ekon is having a town hall meeting, I was like, wow. That place, Ekon played a very big part. I'm talking about our progenitors, our ancestors. Ekon is a very special land. The forest of Ekon, that is where, that was the library of the ancient people. Our ancient people, that's where the library was located. Artifacts, I'm talking about artifact that embodied the astronomic signatures was stored in Ekon, all those things was packed and removed. Stones that have strange writings, the insidies and everything was in Ekon. That is where, that is one of the places that shaped our civilization. Ekon, very powerful place. Our brother was talking about the Chinese, it's not because, it's not just the natural resources, that's not why they are there. There is something more deeper, something more spiritual that he, those people are, are harvesting from that Ekon forest. That forest in Ekon is who is a very special place. You talk about Fulani not being able to penetrate there. Yes, Ekon, they are warriors, but there is something more spiritual that stops them from entering the forest of Ekon. But when Biafra is restored, when Biafra is restored, the history of Ekon will be restored. So today I'm going to take color to twenty thousand A J and, um, fifty thousand A J, making it seventy thousand. My A P M, these people, I am of, of your school of thoughts. These people, there will never be forgiveness. My G and O K K will keep me alive when Biafra is restored. Because there is no man or woman on this planet earth that is of Biafra extract that will say that he or she hasn't heard of Biafra. He or she hasn't heard of what is happening to our people. He or she hasn't heard the massacre, the slaughtering, the struggle for our survivor. So, he still will remember them and there can never be any excuse for any one of them. They will all pay, both the traitors and those that turned their back on us when we mostly needed them. We are going to win this war, whether they like it or not. If they refuse to support, our ancestors will raise stones that will support strangers that will support this, this fight. We are not going back. Thank you, my people, thank you, the people of Ekon.
Thank you.
Honorable Mighty. You know, they don't know how, how heartbreaking we are. When I keep telling you that, all these sabutoi, all these evil people, if I'm driving there in front of Ngari him, I will crush them. Because, uh, I don't see any reason why afterwards happening in Biafra land, you look at, uh, your people being massacred every day. They burn your people houses, be held some, cut some hands off, destroy Biafra farms, rape our sisters, mothers, family members. And you, as a Biafra, you keep quiet. You know, and not just keep quiet, even they are fighting to support the terrorists. They are even fighting against us that are protecting our land. You forgive me, non keeper as well. If there's anything we are doing now that we have never, uh, done right before, we ask God to forgive us. But we do that, whatever we do, so we can still live for another day. Because we cannot let them kill us. Oh, we cannot let them overrun our land, take, you know, take over our land, chase us out of our, where are we going to go? Where will we go? And, uh, I was, uh, yesterday having conversation with one of our honorable. So many of these people, because of the poverty that they have, uh, they have caused of for a lot of Biafrans. Growing up from some that are, have the opportunity to even, uh, uh, you know, attend higher education, they join court, oh, two. Courts that make them to even be sucking blood like the enemies. So please, people like that, disease from your evil, we just like these people in People's Club, it's a court. If you are in People's Club, you know you are in a secret society, you are a court of people that suck blood. That is here, Hernandez Indi and others, all of them, they are in the same court. So please, if you are among them, disease from it, it will never be well. If you keep killing Biafrans, committing all this evil, looking at the long run, what goes around comes around. And, uh, this time around, we'll be holding people accountable. Like the group of people that was here earlier, trying to disrupt what we are doing. They are the sabutois we are talking about. And we said that this is what we live in a generational course. That is what we mean. The audio that was played or the voice that was played earlier, is this person probably a Biafra or a Fulani born in Biafra land that speak Biafra language. Saying something that is not real, lying against innocent man. You know, it's heartbreaking and they have deceived a lot of Biafrans. You see this audio that we play earlier? For those that don't know, Mazyo Gichukunkere. For those that don't know, and who I'm, what I'm up to and whether I'm genuine or not, it can be misleading, just like that, before you know. It would be like the independent media that have uh, say all kind manner of things just to destroy our B D F, destroy our funding system, just to cripple the government, cripple the movement. But these people will suffer, they will suffer, they will suffer. Please, all the evil ones, diseased from it, if not, my goodness, you know, joy will disappear from your home, will disappear from your family. Because if we can't get to you now, I give, I give you one who, you know, who curse you and that curse, that is the word we can utter out. And that word will fly with the air to wherever you are, we affect you. Everything on earth will work against all the evil people, they will.
And I wanted to say that all those youths, in addition to what our A P M said, all those youths that are walking around in Biafra land, a shame unto you. If you allow Fulani to come and take your ancestral land, kill your mothers, rape your women, what are you, what are you a man for? All you know is to jo- join cult and dress up and walk around with your saggy pants and all that. Why your land is being taken away, you are the worstest farm. If you can learn yourself and defend your land, you are the worstest farm, you are a disgrace. Thank you my people, and the people of Ikom, please protect your land, protect that forest. Because that, that forest for thousands of years, thousands of years, our ancestors have used that land to do great things, that forest of Ikom, that place, please protect it, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you mighty. Thank you, please let's sing for mighty dot for his donation support.
Honorable mighty dirty, the animal, mbo mbo. Honorable mighty marama, mbo mbo, yeah, she may raise the head, na mother porinaya, oh yo yo. Hey yo, Dalu, I can't.
Hey, hey, hey.
Gods of the mighty, it is well with you.
They were, honorable Betty, your hand is up, over to you.
Fuck is the fuck?
Get out, you fool people. She know the whole.
He's the evil one that carried Betty's name.
I suspected it because I've been taking them out all this time.
Hmm, Mary, Mary, over to you, unmute yourself.
Wash up.
Mary, unmute yourself.
So I'm trying, okay.
Our sister, I thought this was.
It's me, oh ma.
Sister Mary.
Well done, my sister. Yes, good evening everyone, good evening our A P M. Good evening Information Minister, good evening for all our mother today. Good evening Ikom Biafra. Good evening our A P M, you are welcome. Yes, today for Ikom behalf of Idrung Iboam, I would like to pick, I want to drink, and it's because it's very, very long time, Ikom, eh pound wine.
Hey.
I want to drink from wine for ten thousand Ajema. And I want to welcome our lovely A P M with ten thousand Ajema, that is a twenty thousand A J.
Wow.
Eh J, not Ajema.
Eh J, it is well.
Eh J, and it will be because behalf of Idrung Iboam and from Idrung Petru, I mean of Idrung Iboam. Thank you very much, thank you our A P M Ikom. Good evening, see you guys then, thank you our, all our mommy.
Thank you, honorable Mary, thank you so much. Honorable Mary, it is animal, mbo mbo. Honorable Mary marama, mbo mbo. Oh, yeah, she may raise the, na mother porinaya, oh yo yo. Thank you, I can't shower, oh, our sister Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, thank you Mary, thank you.
Information.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Alright, we have the Biafra EU rep, no, this one should be impersonator. Biafra EU rep, unmute yourself.
Congratulations.
Uh huh, we know it's there to be impersonator.
Losers.
Uh huh, alright. A P M has given a speech and it was well done. We salute all Biafrans that have made it to Ikom State Town Hall Meeting. And as we continue, the floor is open for you to support the town hall meeting. Support Ikom State Town Hall Meeting.
Biafra is only asked for. Every night and day he shouting and pointing to one direction. But his own people are blind and saying it's causing division. Tell me why, why, why someone who sacrificed his life for you and I? Tell me why, why, why out of sight has become out of our mind? He's asking for nothing and cares about not for this people emancipation. Ay, na na na, na na. Guys, there is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue in the morning sunrise. There is a breaking news to those who never knew. Permit me to give you a clue, the morning sunrise.
Amnesty or whatever money that they giving to you. That money will not save your life. You want a country. Where you will actualize your dream. Nigeria, for how many years Nigeria amadmasia was nineteen fourteen? So he expired twenty fourteen. Before twenty fourteen. Where you from your community? You need to ask yourself question. Do your community look like a place that is getting better? What the Nigeria offer you? What do you benefit? Your parents, your forefather? What the Nigeria, what did they benefit from the country called Nigeria? Please ask yourself question. Allen O'Nema that is coming to give you a peanut for you to go and fight your own people, your own brothers. After that, what next? After that, what next? After you fight your own fellow Biafrans? Will that change your life? Will that make your village better? The answer is no. Please, everyone should trade with caution. Because uh there will be a payback. Everybody will answer according to their deeds. So there is a payback. Please, all the youths. Ask yourself question and be careful. Be very careful. Ask yourself question, this hope. And Allen O'Nema that now trying to employ you to fight your fellow citizens. Where is Allen O'Nema? When your community? People be killed massacred. The same people that massacred your community? The same people that are chasing out of your community? Are the same people that wanna bribe you or give you money to fight and kill your community more? Now be you should be that, is that not, is it not heartbreaking? The same people that said they will give you amnesty for what? You are not a terrorist, you are not a criminal. So what is, yeah, what are you talking about the amnesty? What is it for? What it is is that they want to bribe you. To their side so that you can. Fight their fight for them to kill your own people. To kill your own brothers. Please don't collect that peanut for you to go fight against your own fellow Biafrans. Because if you do. Biafra will come after you. There's this video that we're just reading few days ago. Why I didn't really wanna comment on that video? It's uh. Whatever his name is, he's going nowhere because uh. We will deal with him, we already know that. Because we know who sent him is the Nigerian terrorist group, that's who he's working for. One of those that have collected the amnesty, I don't know whether any amount they gave him. To come and do that nonsense, whatever he did. Please. Fellow citizens, youth of Biafra. Don't collude with Allen O'Nema and Nigerian terrorist country to fight your own brothers, to fight your own people. The B D F in our land, they are there to protect your life. If the B D F is not there, ask yourself what do you think will happen? They will overrun Biafra land. The whole Okwe will be militarized everywhere in Biafra land. By then, you won't even see nothing, you won't even move, you can't do nothing. Because you cannot operate freely. In a territory or region where. Where Nigerian terrorists militarize. Even as of now, look at the checkpoints everywhere. There's some places that you have to come out of your car, your vehicle or whatever means of transportation. That you are in going from point A to point B, they have to force you to come out, even raise your hand. To like half a kilometer before. You can now uh uh you can now drive out again. Please, don't accept this useless amnesty. Whatever, there's nothing that will. You are one, you are not a terrorist, number one. Number two, you are not a rebel. Number three, you are not committing any crime in your own land. If you asking for your freedom, it's your right. If you defending yourself, it's your, if it's your right as well, please. Uh Honorable Minister of Information, I think uh you're going to do some program to enlighten and educate Biafra more on this. Because it's very, very important. You know, they always come with this playbook of divide and conquer, divide and rule and for us to keep fighting. Ourself, please, we are all, you know. We need to be vigilant because some of our youth, because of the poverty. Some might just collect money that they can use temporarily. And at the end of the day, you see them resulting. Doing like the video that was flying few days ago. So please uh. If you're a youth in Biafra land, you should be ashamed of yourself. If you have to go and fight against the B D F or fight against your fellow citizens. Everything we are doing is how to protect our land. How to protect you. How to protect Biafra, how we get a better country? Country that will compete, country that you won't lack. Country that you feel better, you know, and be proud of your own country called Biafra. Thank you from here and I greet uh. A special greeting to the administration of Ficon and all the rep and admin that are still here with us this late hour. We appreciate everyone, we appreciate what you are doing. Biafra is here, don't give up. Don't give up, please keep doing what you are doing. And for those enemy that are fighting us on social media. Since you don't wanna join us to fight this great fight, keep doing what you are doing. Because the more you keep doing what you are doing, will be stronger, tougher. And even better. But we encourage you to stop that your nonsense because uh it won't lead you nowhere, rather. Who hold everyone accountable. It's not gonna be well with all of you. Thank you, Ndewo.
Ndewo, A P M. I bless you.
Thank you, A P M, thank you. We have Mighty John is up again, over to you, sir.
This is. Them are you people, you can't stop us.
Oh my god. He saw that Mighty was booked before, so he decided to use Mighty's name.
You know people that are doing this. These are people that have.
Yeah, another one here, another one on Luchuko, eh eh eh. A P M, go ahead.
They are the one we are laying curse on. And they think we are joking. Uh anyway, they think we are joking. More they do what we are doing, we are not giving up. We are still moving. We are not going to stop. We are not going to stop. So they can keep doing whatever they are doing. Next month, I give a result. What is today's date, twenty four, twenty fifty? Very soon. Everybody will bring their report card. Who's the result will be out. And all the evil ones we hide in shame. Shame will be their portion. We have disgraced them, they don't even know where to hide again. So what they, thank you, Ndewo.
They are fighting themselves now. Shame on them.
Alright, A P M, thank you for. Gracing the town hall meeting of Ficon and your entire entourage. Thank you, A P M, thank you everyone that have tuned in and everyone that. Uh participated in one way and another. And we are drawing the curtain. I hope um. The Ecom's state admin is still here.
Miles, this sunny.
Yes, sir.
We also wanna use the opportunity to appreciate all the sabotages, the evil ones that have have tuning to collect their own cost. So that they can go and share it with their entire family.
Yes, so.
It's not a joke. When they will be sleeping in their dream, they won't know what is hitting them. You will wake up and say, I have a bad dream. You have not started, that is, it's just going to be a joke. But uh. Uh are they the one already? See, this Zoom user here. Uh Briggy U S A, you know, this is how they coming, right?
Yes.
They don't know that, we already know their identity. The code already start working.
Zoom user, admit yourself.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh huh. Thank you so much.
Please, honorable, honorable bishop, the real Father Bishop, please, this. They always come with this.
Yes, my laptop, my laptop has been playing up. I thank Ecom, I thank Ecom, please go continue working very, very hard. Your history is. It's remarkable. And I thank you, Sonny, for staying there doggedly. Uh Chinia, thank you for being there for the choir. Yes, I want to strengthen, you know, support our. A P M with thirty um the euro this evening. For his speech, his speech is so moving. And every, every day, every day he's get better, he gets better and gets better. You know, because he's running with the vision of Nam de Kano and Simon Eba. I encourage you to hold that mantle, run with it, we are behind you.
Alright.
Thank you.
Honorable Bishop, thank you. All I'm asking are let Biafra just come in mass support. They will see what will happen. All these useless, illegitimate governors, I bet you, one night, none of them will even sleep in Biafra land. They would say, oh, they don't know that Mazi Yoge. Where is this one from? That's the question they will be asking.
Exactly.
They will say, where? Because uh. Uh I thank God that you as a bishop, you don't come here to say, let's pray and forgive them all. There were no problem because these people. Damage, they have.
Oh my god, oh my god. We pray that they are evil, evil, they are evil will hunt them, that's what the Bible says. They are evil.
Hunt them now, let it start now.
Yeah, UK, you can start a formidable um intercession group. The evil will hunt them.
Yeah. Yes. Even the Bible says, there is no place for the wicked. I don't think it's a coincidence or a mistake. The wicked have no place. The audio that was played earlier, that man, I hope he get my message.
I, I think that man has been saying something good about.
They are the one, they are, they are the one, you know, this is how they discourage people from homeland. With this, their audio is very damaging. And these are evil people I'm talking about. No governor in Biafra land that I even have his contact. Even in the whole entire Nigeria, I don't even know.
I know, I know, I know.
That is number one. But look at how they label me, tag me that I'm brother to who I don't know. Can you imagine? And they were circulating deceiving people. You change from your evil way. All the trouble, the same way who treat the terrorists, that is the same who will treat you all. Evil people. And when Biafra totally re- uh 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 restore. Those attacks that survive able to. Make it to Biafra. The land of Biafra will never bless them.
Amen.
With agony to the rest of their lives. That person would be asking to even, oh say, God, take my life, this suffering. I, I came across this video yesterday when I was going through YouTube. So I still let me watch uh. I saw this clip, I still let me just listen a little bit. I'm like. This man said that, oh, get you who can kill any brother, the governor, do they have collect money, collect which money from? The same Nigeria that I'm fighting against. The same Nigeria that I would go to Washington this. If you guys even actually know the way I talk in Washington, it's more brutal than this. I condemn Nigeria to the hell. Tell, say the way it is. Because I hate Nigeria with passion. Even before I'm appoint uh uh appointed as A P M. Uh you know, you all listening to my speech when we have our fundraising, I always said it. I hate Nigeria with passion that even if I, I said it two years ago, last year I said it before. If I have opportunity, I will burn it down. As a fact to tell you, it's not a country. If you keep the existence of Nigeria. Nigeria will kill us all. Nigeria don't care. Even after they label Nigeria uh uh as a terrorist country by. By UK, uh no, by Canada. Do you know that the politicians, they don't care? They don't care. Former go illegitimate governor, the one that parade himself at Anambra that kill Biafra stood. He's not enjoying life in Georgia, United States of America. Because the same player that he destroyed is not fitting for him. To live a normal life, to enjoy. All they do is to destroy the entire community. Burn down everywhere, destroy the entire country. Then they will flee, they will run away. I had Wike bought a house of over two million, is it in Florida somewhere? They loot wicked evil people. All of them, I got one wicked, if, if not, if you don't affect them now, their family, generation, lineage. Because their family need are not condemning it. Like this evil ones, them cool plotters and others. Their family, they don't want their crime, their evil to affect their children. They have, their children have to condemn whatever their parents are doing. If not, all of them. They will bear the consequences. They will suffer it because our land is bleeding. Can you imagine in Biafra land? A Biafra child will wake up in the morning. Thinking that the day he will come back to his family, his parents in a good manner. Being, you know, back home healthy. Before you know, they will kidnap that child, this terrorist country. Sometimes they gun this innocent Biafra child down. Sometimes they even, you know, harvest uh this innocent. All kind of atrocity. And all this is happening in Biafra land. And you have the ones that call them themselves on the. If I have the opportunity, if it's something that Biafrans can fund what we are doing in our own style, in our own way. All the whole. The ones that are bringing these terrorists, all of them, they will sleep, they won't wake up.
Terrible.
I will come, do you all remember what happened in Ghana? By uh what's the president's name? Rollins, right? When Ghana is going through mess. And Ghana already regained their independence from British government and the Ghana is it. Uh they have their own food territory controlled. There's a time they are in big mess that Ghanas even have to find their green or partial way to the zoo. Called Nigeria at the time that they, too many of them in Nigeria, they have to chase them back again. That's when the slogan of Ghana must go. But what. He, what put Ghana, where Ghana is today, is what that Rollins did. Blame all the whole innocent, before I use a word that won't be fitting here. If it is kill, kill all of them, get them out. So that the young generation can continue. If you don't, they will kill everybody. If you allow hope, hope will kill the whole community and the same hope will implant somebody again that we. They need to be stopped. All as in Biafra land. Anyone that is colluding with the Nigerian terrorists is a terrorist. We will treat that as a, as a terrorist. If it is. If you are colluding with Nigeria, you are a terrorist. This fool should be ashamed of themselves. A foreign country of over five thousand mile. Can that have condemned Nigeria, call Nigeria terrorists? And all these fool call, call themselves American veteran of Ebo, whatever. For the rest of their life. Beautiful it is here, they see how organized, they see how country supposed to be, they see how. The government care for our citizens. And they have theft life. They live in a country here in United States that. The light can never blink a second sometime for years, you have full electricity every day. After seeing how people supposed to live. When these fools go back home, they cannot fight for their own people. From here, even from here, to give them a better life. Shame unto all of them. Today can only look evil people. And they are using our leader Mazinamdekan for their own political gain. When Saludos fight jumping, every day he will run to go see Mazinamdekan to take picture. To parade himself in front of Biafrans. So Biafrans will look at him like he care for Biafrans. All of them. And I also blame the legal team and the family of our leader. To allow all these people to use our leader Mazinamdekan to cast out. They have to be careful. I'm sending message, they have to be careful. What they, they are using Mazinamdekan, our leader's life for polit- for politics. They have to be careful who visit Mazin. The same people that are visiting him, they can't even care about his welfare, his where bill. Bill, be uh bin, they don't care. They don't even care for what our leader Mazinamdekan will believe in. Our leader Mazinamdekan will believe in justice, believe in freedom. Our legal team should be careful, those that they, they allowed to see our leader Mazinamdekan, they have to be careful. They have to be careful because they can be using our leader Mazinamdekan for politics. Enough of this nonsense, all the evil ones. They can go free now thinking it's okay. Our choice, I got go mine, we have thousands of years to live in our God-given land, Biafra land. Every family, every individual, whatever they have done, they will be accountable for it. And this generational cost, time is coming. Those that survive it, we make them work for Biafra for rest of the hard level. Very hard one, for that matter, thank you.
Thank you, A P M.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um Brigi U S A N and S.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need to be short too.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Yes, let's see, let's minister comfort before.
One second, Biko.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, mommy, I you, God bless you.
Well, yes, thank you, thank you, my minister of information, thank you, uh deputy. And thank you uh. To all the people who attended this uh uh town hall. I, I. I, I mean, I am outraged, very outraged. But um. In any case, let me give a lot of credit to my A P M. Um he, his message is resounding really. Uh I mean, around the world. And um. And everything that he has said. If they think it's a joke. Um. Let them think so. Because uh there is God. There is Chukwukeke. And Chukwukeke mandated that Biafra must come. And so I give to my uh excellency. I mean, to his excellency uh. Uh Mazi, again, my A P M, I give him a. A, a kudos, a big kudos uh. Uh for this, you know, for the speech he made. I also salute. My Prime Minister. Uh. His Excellency. Mazi Simon Ekma. I also seize this opportunity to remember and salute. My leader, Mazi Namdekan. And I, again, I, I ask the most high. To, to continue to strengthen him each and every second he spends in that dungeon. And um. Continuing with this uh. Uh. Uh town hall, I, I give a lot of uh. Uh credit to Ecom, Ecom, I hope I'm pronouncing it right, Ecom State de facto. And um. And I thank all the uh uh officials of Ficon for, for their effort. To realizing, you know, what time it is. In our struggle to be able to stage and to be able to uh 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 bring Biafrans. Or invite Biafrans to this meeting. I thank them from the bottom of my heart. And uh, and on behalf. Of Brigi U S A North and South. And on behalf of Ecom, I also would like to. Uh invite the following states to come and partake. If not now, in the future. Uh in the central region and those states are, I believe, uh uh. I know Aludo is already setting the pace, but they are also in the central region. But I would include Ikumessia, Ikumessia, I hope I'm saying it right. Uh Odume Bu State. Uh uh Ikemba State, Arlo State, uh. As an Owere State, uh or Kiwe State. Uh let me see, uh I believe Ebube, uh uh. Capital territory. I, I, I may be missing one or maybe one or two states. But I, I, I believe I named it all. And so I am uh, I am contributing to hundred uh Jama. To support. Our Prime Minister's speech and also to pick up color. And I thank you all. In the name of.
Darlo, Honorable, God bless you, I can't shower the reggae, oh.
Hello.
I thought you have slept though, you didn't see people that came with your own name. No screaming, asking your name and your, and your background.
Really?
No, I thought you slept.
Alright, thank you. Honorable, thank you so much for your donation. We continue.
Thank you, sir.
And we have two more impersonators that have come to impersonate. And, uh, we have two more impersonators that have come to impersonate Ikachukusabi and Noye. Let's open them. Uh, Ikachukusabi, the one that his hand is up, over to you.
Biafra.
Uh huh, we see. Play, you want to run? Biafra message for us. Ah, the other one, don't already run, the other Noye, don't already run. No, don't run, no, come back, go.
Thank you.
Uh, Noye MD, unmute yourself. Yeah, wait, they run, they go. Unmute yourself, Noye MD.
Case you, Israel.
Uh, alright, we have to call it a day. We appreciate everyone. And we call on, um, we call on the, the constate administrator to bring it to an end today.
Uh, thank you, everybody in the house. That we here in ICOM, we are so much glad. In fact, we are very much happy for your presence in this town hall meeting. You made us to feel like a people. You made us to feel like being part of Biafra territory. In fact, for some parts now, uh, we felt as if we are not belonging. But what you have come to do with us this night has made us, you have given us that sense of belonging. We are grateful to all of you. We are grateful to our acting prime minister. We are grateful to you, Honorable Sonny Akparawa Minister for Information. We are grateful to every Brigi cabinet member here in this program. Homeland administrators and all the rest. I lack words tonight to appreciate. I lack words tonight to express my feeling. I am so much happy. I say Mechukokikabiamah bless all of you abundantly in the name of Yahweh Shua. May God continue to unite us as one as our forefathers have ever been. We will be more united the more. I will say good evening, good morning, good afternoon, depending on your location. On behalf of ICOM people, shalom. By our town hall meeting, it is a promise I'm going to fulfill. I am going to comfort with life by wine. So if anybody is interested, if anybody know how to do it, we will do it together in this town hall meeting. Thank you very much brothers and sisters. I say good night from here.
Thank you so much, God bless you.
Don't forget, Upo Bio.
No problem, ma.
Yeah. Don't forget, don't forget the Dika, okay?
Nala, you come now.
Eh, Kaiko, yes.
Thank you, thank you.